Begin the meeting. This is a meeting of the City Council Finance Committee. And.
The chat, Alex is a stupid Nick.
Excuse me? Please don't talk unless you're addressed.
You see, I told you, the city of East Hampton, who's that?
Something strange.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Can you? I'm no co-host. I will kick that person out.
How do I get rid of that person?
Make me a co-host.
You know how to do it?
Yeah.
Oh, there's Peg. Okay, you're a co-host. You got rid of that person?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna start the meeting again. Do we have minutes from the last meeting to approve? We do.
Yes, we do. We had a, I wanna make a motion to approve the minutes from April 14.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes from April 14. Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Counselor Coniff.
Aye.
Jan Rist says aye. Public speak. If you're here as a resident and you would like to speak to the committee.
Stuck in my ass, man.
Uh, excuse me?
Aye.
And that's a Zoom bomb.
Alright, so.
I'll you remove it.
Alright. Erin, are you here to speak to the council? Hearing none, he left. I am going to, uh, move over to Marin. We have promised Marin first dibs. You're muted, Marin. As you know, the city council would like a report on how CARES Act, ESER, and any FEMA monies that the school system got are being spent and used. I understand that you are getting a report, you told me, from the school system later on this month. Can you address that issue now?
Yeah, I can speak to you. Thank you very much. I did just send you all a, sort of a funding overview that is a basic start to what we're, we'll put together and share with you all. And I thought it would be helpful for me, go ahead and read this to you all so that you can, we can sort of walk through this as a framework for any conversation for tonight, and then we can go forward from there.
Do you have, uh, did you say you sent it to us?
Yeah, I emailed it to the three city council members on this meeting.
Well, why don't I share it? Just give me a second. Does everybody see this?
Yes.
Yep. So why don't I go ahead and read it if it's okay? And then we can frame the conversation from there. I also just. I also just wanna be really clear with everybody that I have a limited amount of time tonight. I'm actually going to get my second COVID shot at six o'clock, so I do have a hard stop in order to be able to leave for that. But I wanted to respect Dan's request that to come and speak with you all and to be able to give you some background information and an understanding of how we can collaborate into the future. Okay? So what I will start with saying is that the reality of our school budget is a story of underfunding and juggling of priorities for the last four years. I mean, that's basically, I use that timeframe because that's the timeframe that I've been finance chair. The budget currently from FY 2019 to FY 22 shows that we have lost $100,000 in city funding. Meanwhile, we've seen budget increases of instructional services by upwards of 10 to 13%, and that includes things like teachers, oh my goodness, why am I suddenly blanking? COL, uh, cost of living increases as well as step and column changes that roughly cough covers 66% of the entire school budget, as well as transportation costs of increased roughly 12%. So this is just an overview of the last four years. So FY 2019 saw our budget increase by 1.29%. Meanwhile, instructional services increased roughly 3.5%. We were able to add in .01 FTE position in that, position in that year for a total budget of 12.2, 17.2 million dollars. In FY 20, the budget was increased by 1.76%. Meanwhile, instructional services again increased by roughly 3.5%. We lost that year 6.8 full-time positions in the district. FY 21, we had a 0% increase. Meanwhile, instructional services increased by roughly 2%. We don't have exact amounts on this year, this current year or next year because contracts with the union have not been finalized, and we are working without a contract at this time, so that could increase more. But that budget stayed at 17.5 million. And again, so a loss of 5.1 full-time positions in our district. And as an example, we had to reduce our pre-K program by a third because grant funding was ended. FY 22 budget is now a 2.5 decrease. Meanwhile, instructional services continue to increase by at least 2%, and we were mandated to maintain all of our positions. So the city funding matched the growth. If, if the city funding was to match the growth in cost in the school district with approximately a standard of 2.5% increase, our FY budget in FY 22 would actually be closer to 18.99 million dollars as opposed to the 17.1. In addition to city funding, school administration utilizes a number of grants, and combined, they range roughly $800,000 to $870,000 annually over the same past four years. Never once has the school department been requested to report to City Council Finance Committee on any of the specifics of those grants, let alone requested that we've revised line-by-line itemization of our expenditures. While the request states it seeks transparency for counselors and taxpayers, the request placed an undue burden on the school committee by asking that we report monthly on itemized details such as any changes in spending and why or reimbursement denials. COVID-related funding is mandated by state and federal agencies to reimburse the school department for expenditures directly related to COVID impact. It is not intended to covet, cover the basic budgetary needs of school department as provided by the city. So that's a little bit of an overview. To get into the COVID funding. Apologize.
I just wanna stop you there for a moment. I'm, I have to say that we in the city council did not request. The scope of our, our request is based only on pandemic-related grants. It has nothing to do with school budgets or school spending with regard to regular spending or normal grants. This is all because we have gotten a great deal of funding from the CARES Act, from FEMA, or expecting from FEMA, and there is grants coming in the American Rescue Act, which is a considerable amount of money. We simply wanted to see how that was being used by the city, which we did get, and by the school department. So the scope of this request has nothing to do with the regular spending or the budget. But when we do get the budget, when we do go over the budget, we normally get a great deal of information from the school department, and they give us very much line-by-line spending on many different accounts. We get a budget book from the schools, from the superintendent, and that gives us detail.
Correct.
So I don't, I, I, I have to say that you're, this is my opinion, I think you're taking this the wrong way. We only want CARES Act FEMA managed money and the future American Rescue Plan reports because those monies do not go through the city council in a normal appropriation procedure. The city council's budget procedure includes the schools, and that's normally an appropriation which we pass in June, along with any other supplemental appropriations. So I just wanna tell you that I am not, I'm not gonna react to this from the point of view of what you're worried about, your budget increases, et cetera. We are only concerned about CARES Act, FEMA, and anything related to the pandemic. I'll let the other counselors ask questions now if they want to. I see your numbers on the screen. I would only ask that we get a little more detail on these numbers in the future.
That's what I'm about to do, Counselor Rist, if I'm allowed to continue, please.
Alright.
So CARES Funding Act and FEMA were managed by the city. I believe Jennifer's already provided you with the line-by-line items of that. In there, you'll see that the city, school district, a portion of that was roughly 244,000 in FY 20, and in FY 21 was 77,000. That's still funding pending to be reimbursed, the 77,000, but that's what was submitted to the city. Examples of that was spent by the school on food at roughly 104,000, and in school distant learning at just over $30,000. So that, that's a breakout of some of those funds. In addition, there are four grants that the city, the school department has already funded, and that is the CVRF at $400,000, the Governor's Emergency Funds at $16,000, the RLTE funding at $78,000, and ESER 1 at 184,000. So to combine those four grants funded roughly just over a million dollars of additional funds that were spent on a number of things. So these, as I state here, these expenses were not spent on normal budgetary items. They were spent entirely related to COVID as required by law. Examples include testing and analysis of our school buildings for airflow and the prescribed improvements, installation of Plexiglas, purchase of PPE, COVID-related cleaning supplies, distant learning platforms, unique learning, distance learning, curriculum tools, as well as technology improvements and much more. All additionally hired staff were because we had staff out on leave due to COVID or issues related to learning, remote learning. The district also agreed to pay hazard stipends to staff required to enter the building as related to the MOU that was a result of COVID. The only additional, you know, perk that was sort of something that we were already trying to move towards pre-COVID was that in the last year, we were able to utilize this funding to help the school district reach one-to-one technology in advance of, yeah. So that was, that's a definitely additional thing that we were able to do because of that. One additional note was that Desi provided the school district with the delivery of air purifiers, and so that's roughly $33,000 worth of cost that was not incurred and not related to any of those grants. It was apparently, it was purely a donation to us. Looking to the future, to some of the additional COVID funding, SR2 is roughly looking at $702,000, with which a minimum of 140,000 will be required to go towards after-school and summer educational programming. These are not, we have not applied directly for this, these applied funds to this grant yet, so this is still in process. But some of the examples that that will be utilized over this current year and next year include staffing such as additional paraprofessionals, nursing, counseling, and intervention specialists, staff development supplies, and school, school, summer school programming. We also are looking to fund an improvement in parent engagement, especially for marginalized families to ensure equity and accessibility, as well as website revisions that are gonna help offer more of a engaged medium for social media to be able to reach parents in our community. SR3, which is approximately $1.5 million, is still something that's in process. It's not something that we have been granted yet, and it is definitely anticipated to be used over the next three years. So also, we have some direction, some recommendations that were provided to us by the Massachusetts Association of Super, School Superintendents relating this COVID funding. And this is a quote from them. "The benefits of SR2 and 3 are to the spend by dates of September 2023 and 2024. These spending timelines recognize that student return, recovery, and acceleration needs will not be a one-year fix, but rather a multi-year strategy of educational programming, staffing, and student need in school districts. Using ESER funds as a replacement for Chapter 70 forces a shortened spending timeline of June 2022. This will undermine superintendent's abilities to address the deep about social, emotional, mental health, and learning loss needs of our students. Additionally, the shortened timeline implies that all pandemic woes will be fixed by June 2022 in school districts. Using one-time funds to fill gaps in it is an unsound fiscal policy and has the potential of cities and towns creating funding cliffs." And that's one of our concerns here, right? And that's why I'm presenting this information to you.
Can I ask you a question?
Definitely.
The ESER funds as a replacement for Chapter 70. Are you telling me that's what the state is telling you is gonna happen? I'm misunderstanding that.
No, I'm saying if we were to use ESER funds to replace Chapter 70 funds to, to basically be, to underfund our district and not provide the funding that's needed to our district that would, and then use ESER funds to basically fill in those gaps, is setting ourselves up for, you know, a cliff where suddenly those funds disappear and we're, we're in a much worse financial strait than we already are.
I, I guess what I'm saying is you're not suggesting that the state is not gonna give us Chapter 70 funds for the future.
No, no one's suggesting that. Chapter 70 funds will still be coming.
Alright. I think I understand what you mean, though.
Yeah, this is, this is a recommendation from the association saying that to, to make sure that we don't think of ESER funds as something that can be utilized in place of, you know, underfunding schools and filling the gap with this funding from ESER 1 or 2 or 3. Does that make sense, or am I still?
No, no, I'm done.
Okay. So again, you know, as I've told Dan previously, you know, we just had a spring break for our, for our staff as well as starting schools just with all of our students back into school on Monday, and so we are not able to provide in-depth information. We will provide that by, as I state here, we're gonna be gathering that information. We're looking at a preliminary report that will be provided to the school committee on the 11th of May, and will be provided to that, to you all as well as soon as that is together. And we'll be reviewing it in specific categories under PPE, cleaning, building improvements, transportation, food, technology, curriculum, and staffing. So those are all things that are something that we will work towards and, and get to you shortly, but is not something that we were able to be provided to you tonight. That's why I'm giving you sort of this general overview to answer some questions and see what kind of questions you may have. So, uh, you know, in conclusion, the restriction of funding that the city has had over the last four years has left our schools in survival mode that hurts our ability to provide the necessary, let alone desired level of support for our district and students. If our students have been funded, the basic cost increases, there have been many missed opportunities that we would have chosen to fund. For example, we would have chosen not to decrease pre-K program funding, cutting registration by one-third when grant support ended, and indeed, we would have increased our pre-K through programming as has proven one of the most important factors in long-term educational success. We would also have provided elementary-level school counseling before it was made possible through COVID funds because mental health support for students is important for academic success. Finally, another folding, uh, funding-based issue has unfolded in our district over the past number of years is that the Department of Public Health requires RN-level certification of nursing staff in all school buildings. However, we have not had the funding to achieve this, instead relying on LPN-certified nursing support. Citations by the state reached the level of restricting our ability to have elementary field, field trips in FY 20, but under, this year, we were able to have an agreement with DPH where we were able to increase a second RN in the district as we were moving towards only housing two school buildings as of FY 23. None of our shortfalls and poor programmings from a lack of interest or attention to the needs of our district but are entirely based on a lack of funding. It is the hope of the school committee that city funding can be reviewed and improved to better support the needs and vision of a 21st century education for our students. So that's my overview. As I said, I, we, I can give you those, that's, this is to the best of my ability, the information we have right now, and we'll be able to give you more details in the future once that time we have ability to pull those numbers together.
I think, I'm only speaking for myself. I'll let the other counselors speak to it, but I, I think your timeline is okay. If you get them, on the 11th, you get a detailed report. If you email that to us and the full council, when we have the budget here, and we'll be able to have already analyzed that and maybe have questions ahead of time. In other words, I would rather not see it for the first time at that meeting because we're also discussing the entire school department's budget. That's my, my feeling, and I'm just gonna ask our Counselor Gomez and Counselor Connor to comment on all this and that timeline. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. Um. I'm, I'm confused a little bit by this. This was not meant to be a budget discussion, so.
Yeah.
It feels very much like this was a budget presentation, which is not at all what I was expecting. I was expecting, and I also get a little bit, I'm, I'm feeling a little bit like there's some tension here, and I really don't understand why. I, I guess I was just thinking there would be a spreadsheet that said, here's a thing, and then we spent it on school stuff, and here's another thing, and we spent it on sanitizer, and we've gotten reimbursed this, and we haven't gotten reimbursed this, but we expect to be, thank you, have a nice day. But it, it feels a little more contentious than I was expecting. I don't know why, but we'll perhaps leave that for another day. The budget, you know, we can talk about, that timeline seems completely fine. And we can talk about the actual budget when we get to it, and perhaps there will be more detail around some of these numbers, but, you know, I, this is not what I expected, so I'm a little taken off guard a little bit.
Counselor Gomez.
I'm okay with that. Yeah, he can bring you later. I only have, only request, if that, that's possible. I saw there is extra staff, and if, I don't know if it is possible to know how many extra staff we have and if those staff we're planning to keep any future or not.
Ken, I guess that's a question for you, Marin, on extra staffing? If you know the answer.
I mean, he can answer later if he don't have been the answer now, so.
Yeah, I mean, we've had, I don't have exact numbers, and that's what we'll be putting together for the future. We will, we'll, we'll get that to you in the next two weeks. So, um, yes, we've had to be able to hire additional paraprofessionals, some additional counseling and intervention specialists, and those are people that will be supported through some of this COVID funding.
Okay. Anything else, counselors? So just to repeat, you'll probably get us something before May 11th strictly on the COVID grant funding and any spreadsheet kind of data you can give us prior to the meeting on the 17th, if you can, okay?
Yep, and, you know, I would just recommend or request, I think is, sorry, that's not, not recommend, but request that, you know, I think this is something that we can look at as a collaboration that, you know, we are, we can find a way that our committee and your committee can find a time to meet and review funding that's happening within our school district. I think that, you know, from our perspective, your request is very much a part of a broader budget question, and that is why I presented that information. I think that it's to look at COVID funding outside of the overall city budget funding of our school district is taking too small of a window, and that's why we see it very much in the context of our entire funding and the really major concern that we have going into this year's budget with a loss of 2.5% and how we're supposed to be able to continue as a healthy school district is very much a concern. And I think that it should be a concern of yours. And so if we want to have an opportunity for our joint finance committee members to meet and discuss, then I look forward to that as an opportunity.
We'll discuss that in the future. Counselor Coniff.
Yeah, that's fair, Marin. I, my concern was the school budget was not on our agenda tonight, and so we really can't talk about it. So what was on our agenda was the COVID relief money, and so all the rest of this about the budget will have to table until a couple of weeks from now. But I hear you.
Well, and I said, I would suggest, you know, you're welcome to come to any one of our meetings or that we find a time that we have joint meeting that is outside of your meeting or our meeting if you'd like to, because I think that that would be the most respectable thing for both of our elected bodies to meet outside of our individual meetings if that's something that you'd like to continue to discuss about how our, how our joint committees could look at financing in our school district.
That may be possible, but May is full of finance committee meetings because we have to review the budget. So I don't know if that would happen after July 1 or after June, but we'll see. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You guys have a good evening.
Move on from, do you need anything, Omar? Or you're just waiting to buy? Okay. Thank you. I promised Barbara and then you, Hadal, are you okay? Waiting a couple of minutes because you'll be fast. Uh, you're muted, Hadal.
Yeah, I can wait, no problem.
Barbara's request is a council request, so it's actually Peg's request for $1,000 to cover the remainder of our needs. Maybe one more meeting in June, which I hope we can avoid, but also any advertising for anything that needs a public hearings coming forward. And you, you know about the big budget public hearing, and I've heard that we might get ordinances like the Affordable Housing Ordinance and the Accessory Dwelling Ordinance and things like that, but you've just said you don't think you're worried about. You think $1,000 is enough, right, Barbara?
Yeah, so let me just tell you where we are now. We've, we've got one pending bill, and after we pay that, the amount left in your budget for expenses is $160.42. So that's definitely not gonna do it for the rest of the year because just after this next meeting, you've got one supplemental, you've got the cannabis, the two housing things that could come up for public hearing, and you've got the budget. So it's really, it's really only three meetings right now, but, you know, $160 isn't gonna cut it. And, you know, an average on, let me see, the high that we paid for advertising one month was 413, the low was 137. So, I mean, I, you know, it goes all over the place. So I think. Goes all over the place, so I think, you know. What did I put in nine twenty-five for advertising? That should be plenty.
We trust your judgment on all this, so.
I mean, I mean, I try to make the ads as short as I can, you know, really, really short as I can, because it's.
I'd love to have a poll on how many people read the ads.
I know, nobody does.
Be minuscule, but anyway.
Yeah, legal ads are super expensive. I didn't, you know, they're more expensive than display ads. It's ridiculous, ridiculous. And the seventy-five dollars would cover if we have an additional meeting in June, which I really hope we don't. But, so anyway.
And Council Gomez, do you have any questions on this?
No, I, I, Barb knows what she's doing. So I think, I think this is plenty and hopefully we won't have another June meeting.
All right, I'll ask for. If there's no other questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the thousand.
I'll move.
We have a motion to approve the supplemental appropriation of one thousand dollars for city council. Needs, forget what that says. Further discussion, hearing none, Council Gomez.
Aye.
Council Connor.
Aye.
And I say aye, Janice says aye. Barbara, this is up for public hearing next week.
Okay, yep.
All right.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
Okay.
I'm gonna. I'm gonna share the screen with the. The latest, the last report we got from Hadel was January and she says she promises by the. Meeting on the twenty-fourth, which deals with revenue, which is my main concern, to have as much more information as possible. So we can look at FY twenty-one revenue as compared to FY twenty-two. Projections by the mayor. So Hadel, do you have anything you want to say about these? I feel. That they are. Pretty good compared to last year in that. This is the collections that we had last year and these are the collections this year. For instance. Property taxes, which is real estate taxes, was fifty-seven percent in January. And last year. In January. It was sixty-three percent, so we're close.
Yes.
So do you feel comfortable with our revenues that will end the year, okay? Or do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, I just did a real quick calculation here. It's, it's a little bit over. We are right on track. It's, if we compare. What is, what is estimated by the end of January is fifty-eight point seven nine percent. No, fifty-eight point three four percent and we have collected altogether fifty-eight point seven nine. So it's like point forty-five over, so we have little margin there. It's, and I mean, you know, we are right on track. That's what I, I can say and as, as I said to you. Council risk is. That by next week or two or before the meeting, I should be able to give you as much as. We collected, so that will give you another good overview to that, how we are doing.
My goal is comparing revenue for the two years because our budget is based, I know the mayor is here and I know the mayor's. Always conservatively estimates revenue for the new fiscal year. So I'm sure. If the numbers hold and we get to where we want it to be. That the budget will be fine. Jen, do you have anything on expenses that concern you at all? I, I don't, I, I don't. The January report is here, but I don't need to bring it up. In the sense that department's spending money and we're getting into deficits you're worried about or anything like that.
No, I mean, I think that the spending has been on track. And. You know, any like, I guess, for lack of a better word. Out of the ordinary spending has been cares FEMA related. You know, so I mean, I, I haven't seen and Hadel can speak to this as well because she sees all the, the warrants, obviously, but. I don't see any excessive spending and I know at this time of the year, I, I know the mayor had sent out a directive that. You know, anything non-essential should be. You know, held back on, so. I, I think honestly that our financial status is pretty good for this year, especially given, you know. The pandemic. And I think that as long as we estimate. Conservatively for revenue for next year and, you know, we. Are mindful of the money that we get for. COVID relief, then I think we'll be in good shape.
As long as we get the FEMA money, we'll be happy. Mayor, do you have any comment on all of this?
Um, what I would just want to make a, a general comment for those listening in or, or watch the recording that. Hadel Patel was our assistant auditor. Our auditor had retired early in twenty. Early in twenty-twenty-one and Hadel's been holding the department down with, of course, support from others. But she's really been the main point person. So when folks are looking or hearing that we don't have certain numbers or revenue or whatnot. It is certainly not because of, of Hadel's lack of effort and knowledge and competence. I would also, I'm, I'm happy where we are as far as what's collected. I'm interested to see when we get everything straightened out and we are going near to, to year end. What departments actually didn't spend in certain, in certain line items because of COVID? I mean, likely spending it elsewhere or a different source of money, but. It'll, it'll be interesting to see the sweep of accounts and, and once we get through all their journal entry. It'll, I think it'll give us an interesting. You know, perspective of, of what happened over COVID. And I think that's important because it will help us reallocate. Resources and dollars in the coming years for us to be better prepared. For hopefully something like this that never happens again. And, and just, you know, what, what we spend when we're full in person and, and, and what we don't. And there are a lot of one-time expenses that are related to COVID nineteen. But are also expenses we would have had otherwise, like laptops. But we were able to purchase those through the COVID nineteen money, so the technology line has a gap. Because we were able to spend money on those lap, the money we spent on laptops was reimbursable by COVID nineteen. And, and the same with some other pieces of, of equipment, what it all adds up to, we don't know yet, but we, we will soon and. You know, the, the separate spreadsheet that, that, that Jen keeps and then going back and forth with Hadel. Yeah, I think there'll be an interesting wonky conversation to be had about spending, you know, midsummer. You know, maybe around the conference table with cups of coffee or something like that, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm. With everything we know and everything we don't know, I feel okay on the budget. We always get nervous towards the end of the, the year, the, and year end and, and I am concerned for both. Audit and for treasury. As, as far as managing year end this year, there's a lot going on. And we had a lot going on and. I guess the last thing I'd say about this is we were very successful and have been very successful going. For grants before COVID nineteen. And now with COVID hitting and just the, what that does to how we work, but also with the additional. Care Act money coming in and American Rescue Act money and whatnot, that's a, that's a lot of accounting. On top of what we were already flat out. I mean, I'm not saying I'm regretful on the grants we got before COVID. But that's a one-two. That's a, that's a really a, a, a one-two. Hit on the impact on this in the. On the city, so again, we'll look at it, but you know, audit and finance, audit. And treasury and finance-related operations, I'm very proud of. And I, I, you know, tip a big hat to, to Hadel. You know, the auditing, you know, superhero and, and our treasurer who's like figuring out FEMA reimbursements, so. Yeah, that, those are, those are my comments.
I just wanted to say thank you for bringing up. The fact that Hadel is. Has been alone in that office and has some support. But is catching up and there was no implication that just because we only have January that. I was upset at all about lack of reports from.
Yeah.
April and March, not at all, and I completely echo what the mayor said, you're doing super work, Hadel. And you're trying to catch up and. Just to put it in simpler terms, the accounting and the financing of this city. With an over fifty million dollar budget is complicated enough. Without adding all of the other COVID-related grants and, and spending that we have to deal with. And you have to stay on top of it, so Jen keeps all her hair and we get all our FEMA money. So beyond the regular auditing, which is a lot of hard work to begin with. Hadel, you've done a great job, so. Peg, Omar, any questions or comments?
Okay, so I want to add a couple of things with respect to expense. We have this system in place from the last multiple years. Where number one, we don't let anybody overspend. Everything goes through the PO system, so if there is even a shortage of a penny. That purchase order gets rejected from the audit office, so that's a one very big control we have in place. Normally in the month of May and June, what we do, we run expense control report. As requested any given time or at least twice a month. During the regular fiscal year, we do once in a, at the end of the month, we just run expense control report, distribute to the departments. They know where they stand. Particularly May and June, we have, we have created the system where we do at least twice. And if time allows, we do it three times in a month. The expense control report and distribute to the department so they know where they stand. And if they know that there is other expenses coming, they have to. Either make the arrangement or put it off for the next fiscal year, so I think with respect to. Expenses. It, it, we should be okay, we should be okay, and we also have control where if anything is. Needed to be spent for this fiscal year that has to go through mayor. So not just like they can say, okay, please process this, no, it's not gonna work that way. You have to get mayor's approval, mayor has to say yes, and if, if she says no, we are not going through this route. Yeah.
Good.
Yes, we do.
Those are the two things I wanted to add it with respect to expense.
Well, that's why Barbara came up with the thousand dollars. She was able to project what she needed. And all the department, your expense reports helped the department say, oh my God, I need this, I don't have enough money in that budget line. They asked the mayor for a supplemental appropriation. In a timely manner, I'm, it always happens end of June and then we have old bills and everything that we get to, so.
Yep.
Thank you for doing that because department heads need to be kept on their toes.
Yes.
Anything else from anybody, Omar, anything? Thank you, Hadel, you're doing a great job and Jen, you always do a great job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I don't know if we're getting any supplemental appropriations, councilors, in the next budget. If we do, I'll take them up first because our next meetings deal pretty much with the budget. We will get that budget officially in the packet this week. And we will send it to committee because it has to be officially to committee, okay? And we got the budget booklet, which I assume has all the narratives and everything in it. I didn't look at it. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, Council Connor.
Aye.
Council Gomez.
Aye.
Council risk says aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.